Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you all taking time from your busy schedules to be here with us to discuss this very, very important topic of safety and security. It's an ultra-important topic. But before I get started, I did want to thank some individuals that play a key role in the success of our district, spend a lot of time away from their families, and help us ensure that our school district is running at its full potential, and that is our Board of Trustees. I'll start with our Board Secretary, Ms. Debbie Crane Aliseda. We also have Sam Saldiva Jr., Trustee. We also have Trustee Marcos Suarez. And also, Trustee Conrado Alvarado. Our Board President couldn't be with us tonight, but let's give our Board President, Tony Furina, a round of applause. Also, our Vice President couldn't be here, but let's give Larry Esparsa, Vice President of our Board of Trustees, a round of applause. And also, a round of applause for Trustee Daniel Vella. This group of individuals plays a key role in the success of our district, and we appreciate them very, very much. We also have some special guests with us. I'd like to recognize the Honorable Judge Renee Rodriguez Benicourt. Thank you very much for being here. We also have Renean Ojosha from DHR. Thank you, Rene. In the back corner over there, thank you very much. Poyela Garcia from the District Attorney's Office, thank you, sir. Thank you very, very much for being here. So, it's an important night tonight. I thank you all very, very much for taking time from your busy schedules. As I look across the audience, I also see staff members. So, to all the staff, thank you for all the energy, for all the hard work, for everything that you do to ensure that our schools run safely. I would like to recognize a special group, all our building principals. Building principals, please stand and be recognized, all of our building principals. If you're a building principal in McAllen ISD, please stand and be recognized. Thank you, thank you very, very much. And I know there's a lot of people here, and I can go on thanking all the special people that make things happen in McAllen ISD, but we are set to a time schedule, so I did want to get going with our program. Couple of things, my presentation's gonna be approximately 20 minutes, and at the end of the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask any question that you may have. You'll also have an opportunity to give any feedback that you believe can help us get better. But I will ask that save your questions and any comment you may have for the end of the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to do that. And also, if you'll keep your questions concise, so that we have as many people as possible able to ask questions. And I'll also ask, please, that if you have something that pertains to you on a case that deals with your child specifically, on something that you need to speak about, save that. Let's keep the questions big picture, the comments big picture, and those that can help campuses entirely, or the district entirely, get better. And if there's something that you need to talk to me about on a personal level, after the meeting, I'll meet with you, so that we can go ahead and discuss that. And if it gets too late, well, then we can set up an appointment and meet another time. But I do want to take the opportunity once again to thank you all. This is being livestreamed, so if you're watching online, please know that at the end of the presentation, you'll have an opportunity to send in questions that you may have. And there's an email address up here, town.hall@mcallenisd.net. So, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions there, too. And we'll do our very best to answer the questions as efficiently and as soon as possible. So, please know that. One of the things that we know, and if you can give me some water, please? One of the things that we know is that on February 14th of this year, a horrific event happened. A horrific event happened in Parkland, Florida, at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And that event there is all too common across the nation. And we know that it's ultra-important that when we look at the lives of children, that we know that when we're dropping our kids off at school, and whenever, as educators, we're charged with educating children, that we know that we want to get them back to their families, safe and sound. So, you look at these individuals that lost their lives on that day, and it's heart-wrenching. So, at this point, if you'll please join me in a moment of silence for all of these students that lost their lives, please bow your heads. Thank you. I also want to thank Congressman Ojosha, thank you, sir. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate you taking time from your schedule to be here with us. But one of the things that we know is, we want to send our hearts and prayers to all those that lost their lives, that were injured and are recovering in hospitals, that were impacted by this tragedy, that have post-traumatic stress disorder because of this situation, that we have families that are heartbroken and forever will try to put the pieces together. Our hearts and prayers go out to them. But one of the things that we know is that that's important, but more important, or just as important, is acting and changing and making adjustments necessary to ensure that this never happens again. That's why we're here tonight. We're taking time to come together, because we want to make sure that this doesn't happen again. We want to make sure that we have systems and processes in place that protect children, that protects staff members, so that we don't have to be in a situation where we're mourning the loss of. We don't want to be in that situation. And in McAllen ISD, we feel very confident that we have systems and processes in place to make that happen. That change, that drive in our district is driven by our strategic plan. We have four goals and seven strategies that serve as a vehicle to move our district forward. And if you look at those four goals and those seven strategies, you'll see Goal One is student achievement and student focus. And when we look at student achievement and student focus, it's not just academics, it's also keeping kids safe. It's also meeting their social and emotional needs. It's also ensuring that, as we educate them, that we get them home safely, that in the event that there's a crisis, that we know how to respond to that crisis. That's what student achievement, student focus is all about. When you look at Goal Two and people development, it's about not only developing people to deliver quality instruction, but it's also, how do we make sure that people are prepared to service children on the front side of a crisis? How do we ensure that we have systems and processes in place to prevent these things from happening? And how do we ensure that if something were to happen, that we can act efficiently, that we can act at a very, very world-class level with regard to a response? And in McAllen ISD, we're very confident that we can do that. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. But we're good. We're very, very good at what we do. As a father of a student that goes to McAllen ISD, is a kindergarten, I got two more coming behind him, I feel comfortable with all my heart to send my child to his school, and I know that there's systems in place to keep him safe. And as an educator, I feel confident with your children, as they come to our schools, to ensure that we have systems in place to not only prevent things, but in the event that there's a crisis, respond to things. I feel very, very confident in that. And it's our strategic plan that helps us do that. We also have Goal Three and facility priorities, and Goal Four and financial priorities, and it's all aimed at safety and security. But it's this board, this team of aid up here, and the administration, that works very hard to make things happen. What you see before is a visual representation of all the things that we do in our district. And this is what we do. This is our business. This is how we do things. This is how we make things happen. And I'm excited tonight to walk us through it. But I want to emphasize the fact that it's these four goals and these seven strategies that service the vehicle to make things happen. That's important. That's ultra-important. So, I'll get into some of the things that I'm talking about. If you look at one of the common denominators with regard to kids that have acted out and committed crimes, one of the issues is mental health, mental illness. That's one of the common denominators. So, in McAllen ISD, we have a family treatment program, and a system and a process and a response to intervention to ensure that we're providing services to children that need help. And not only to the student, but to their families. And we're not only doing it internally, we have memorandums of understanding and partnerships with entities in the city that we can send students to, and we can send their families to. We have relationships with Tropical Texas Behavioral Health, and we send kids there to get help and their families. We have relationships with UTRGV School of Medicine, and they're there to help us make it happen. We have relationships with Mesquite Treatment Center. We have relationships with South Texas Behavioral Health Center. We have relationships. And those relationships through the family treatment program allow us to respond when a child is dealing with mental illness. And it's not unique to our community. Mental health, mental illness, is something that the entire world is faced with. And again, I'll mention that everybody that's committed a violent crime has a history of mental illness. So, what can we do? We execute our game plan for the family treatment program, and we do it very well. I will say, we do it very well. I'm very confident in this aspect of our game. Another common denominator is the fact that we have suicide issues, kids with suicide ideations. And it's heartbreaking, but it's a reality. And these students that commit these crimes, many of them had these suicidal ideations. And in McAllen ISD, we have systems to identify whether it's a Type One, low-risk, Type Two, Type Three, or a very high Type Five. So, it goes one, two, three, four, five, from a risk standpoint. But, any suicidal ideation in our district is ultra-important where you're gonna get services, where we're gonna help you, where if you fall within this spectrum, you're gonna be treated by the family treatment program, and so is your family, and we're gonna try to help you get through that, because we don't want to lose one life. We don't want to lose one life. So, we have this system, and I'm not gonna go through it in detail, just like I'm not gonna go through any of this, but you do have handouts, and you can review them, and you can ask any questions that you want at the end, or through the email. But I did want to point out that not only do we service kids with mental illness, but with suicide ideation. We also have a program for non-suicidal self-injury, because sometimes you have kids that cut, you have kids that harm themselves in some form or fashion, and those are signs of a kid crying out, those are signs of a kid needing help, those are signs that we take very seriously. So, we have a system for that, too, non-suicidal. And it's from a low risk, to a moderate risk, to a high risk, but there's systems and processes that immediately go into play when somebody shows any of those risks. And again, it flows back through a response to intervention and a family treatment program, because we're servicing the child and the family. Another common denominator, when you look at school violence and you do the research, is a lot of these kids were bullied, either directly, indirectly, or through cyberspace. Kids were bullied in some form or fashion. In McAllen ISD, we have a bullying program, that is a reporting program, that there's an educational side to it, that there's an investigation process, and we take every bullying case seriously, because we don't want any kid to go to school fearful. We don't want any mom and dad to be dropping their kid off at school worried about whether they're gonna get picked on. Now, do we have cases? Of course we do. But we have a system to address those cases. We have a system to ensure that there's caring adults that are gonna help a child. And not only that, but we're gonna help the kid that's being the bully also. We're gonna try to rehabilitate that child, too. Not only the victim, we're gonna work with the kid that's been bullied, but we're gonna work with the kid that is the bully. And we're gonna work that through, through our bullying program, and there's, as you can see, several steps that go into it, to identifying it. But the point I'm trying to make is, whether it's the family treatment program, our suicide intervention program, our non-suicidal program, or our bullying program, all of this is trying to get in front of something happening that's gonna hurt someone, or where somebody's gonna get hurt. These are systems and processes that prove that we're committed to continuous improvement and self-evaluation in McAllen ISD, and we do it very well. We have Title IX investigations, because another common denominator is that students felt harassed, or discriminated against, or a combination of. So, we have Title IX investigations that occur. We have a Title IX coordinator for students, and we have a Title IX coordinator for staff. But we don't ignore when somebody feels harassed or discriminated. We attack it, just like we attack bullying, just like we attack any other aspect of when a child or a family needs help, Title IX is no different. And we're very, very proud of these systems, because these are all on the preventive side, so that people can stand up for others, so that we can be there for one another, so that we can show that we care. Then we get to, this is all, how do we prevent, how do we service, how do we help? Then I want to tell the story of what we do at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. If we look at the elementary schools, one of the things we're very proud of, from a Goal Three standpoint on facility priorities, is the fact that all of our elementary schools have lobbies, so you walk in and you can't get through. That's something that we work hard to put into place, so we know that we have security lobbies at our elementary schools. We have a Raptor system, where you go to school, you have to swipe your ID, and that brings up red flags for people that are coming into our schools. At our elementary schools, we don't have an assigned police officer, but we do have our officers that are in quadrants, and they're responsible for different quadrants, and they do visit elementary schools daily. So, although we don't have an officer there, they're either visiting, or can respond very, very quickly, but we do have emergency management teams on every elementary campus. We have teams that can respond, that practice. We also have camera systems, not only that can be monitored at the campus level, but can be monitored from a central location by our police department. So, our elementary schools have systems and processes in place to keep them safe. Our elementary, our middle schools, we do have an officer assigned to our middle schools. So, they're there full-time, and they're keeping our students safe, and they're there full-time, so that our patrol can focus on the elementaries. We also have safety teams, centralized camera systems, the Raptor system, and I have drone capabilities here, because our police department has a drone division. Elementaries can use it, too, in the event of a crisis, or anything that we need an eye in the sky for. Our military-grade drone will be there to give us any information that we need. From a high school standpoint, we have security huts, and we're very proud of those. We refurbished them recently. We have an officer in them, so we have an officer on the outside at our high schools. We have four police officers at each high school, and they do a very, very good job of keeping our school safe. We have the Raptor system, we have drone capabilities, we have safety teams. And you might be thinking, well, my child goes to Achieve Early College High School, and they don't have an officer there. But one of the things that I will tell you, just so that you know, for peace of mind, is that STC has their own police department as well, and they have a solid police department. And on that campus, they have, at the Pecan Campus, where our Achieve Early College High School is, there's nine police officers there, and 13 security guards. So, there is a police presence. And our PD also works with them, should there be a situation. But I did want to give parents with Achieve students peace of mind to know that we do have that in place. So, all of these blocks in yellow are all the preventive things that I talked about already. All of this happens at our elementary, our middle schools, and our high schools. And we're proud of the fact that we have great, great systems in place to address that. And then we have facilities, maintenance, and operation. Facilities, maintenance, and operation, we're very, very proud of the fact that we've taken some active measures to work on things such as campus fencing, such as security entries, such as replacing fire alarms, and intercom systems, and things of that sort. So, we do have money earmarked for safety, and we have taken measures to make our schools safer. Are there areas that we can improve upon? Absolutely. Do we have a game plan for it? Yes, we do. But at this point, we have systems and processes in place to ensure that, from a facilities, maintenance, and operations side, that we're safe. From a crisis management, from a safety management side, this is just visual representations. I wanted to give you all a visual representation of all the emergency management teams in our district. So, if you look at that, that's a visual representation of all the teams ready to act from an emergency preparedness standpoint. In the event that we do all of this, and something happens when we need to lock down, and sometimes we do, there may be something going on in the neighborhood, we're very, very efficient at utilizing these teams to lock our buildings down quickly. The other thing that we've done, from an emergency preparedness standpoint, is that now, every building in our district has an emergency management team. So, we have a central staff emergency management team that works on ensuring that we're working with the campus emergency management teams. This represents the district emergency management team. I know you can't see it, but just picture, all of those people have a responsibility. And then this represents all of the buildings that are non-campus, that have emergency management teams. All the other charts represent all the campuses that have emergency management teams. So, that's a visual representation of all the people that are trained, and trained on a monthly basis to ensure that our children are safe. All of these teams train on medical emergency drills. Should somebody go into anaphylactic shock, we go, we act, we make it happen. Somebody having a seizure, the team goes, they act, they make it happen. If somebody, if there's a situation where we have to shelter in place, where we have an intruder in the building, where we have a school bus evacuation drill, we have tabletop exercises to practice all these things, lockout drills, severe weather drills, evacuation drills, lockdown drills. So, we practice, we practice. We go into lockdown, sometimes we go from lockdown to evacuation, sometimes we go from evacuation back into lockdown, sometimes we do an evacuation, and we'll have one particular exit point that they're used to going to, blocked off, so they have to go to an alternative route. We try to practice game time, so when we have to react, that we're able to do it. So, our emergency management teams are solid. We have a Google Classroom, we have a phone number for everybody on there, we can have immediate contact, we have an emergency management center. So, we're on top of our game. I would put our emergency management teams up against any other school district anywhere with our abilities to respond to crisis situations, because we practice, and we practice well, and we're very, very prepared. So, I'm very, very happy that we're able to tell the story of not only what we do on the preventive side, but we're able to tell the story on what we do on the emergency preparedness side, and that we're able to act. So, as a parent, I can know when I send my child to school as a dad, now I'm talking to you as a dad, when I take my little Joe Douglas to school, and I drop him off, he's safe. And the same for you guys. And as an educator, I can know the same thing, because I love your kids like they're mine. I've been in the game of education for 22 years, and my biggest thing is keeping your kids safe. That's what I want. I want to educate them academically and socially, but I want them to go back to you safe and happy, and smarter than they were when they got to school. I want that, and that's what my dream is, and that's what my mission is, and that's why I'm on this planet. That's why I'm an educator. I'm an entrepreneur of the human spirit. I'm here to help people. So, when it comes to safety, we take it serious. That's why we're having this town hall meeting. That's why we took time to meet with everybody in this room. And this isn't the last one we're gonna have. We're gonna keep doing it till we get it right. And I'm so glad that this room is full of individuals, and I'm looking forward to all the questions and all the feedback, so that we can get better, because we're good, but we can always get better. But I can say with all the confidence that we're very, very confident in what we do. So, in closing, there was a quote by a little girl, her name was Emma Gonzalez, and she went to the high school in Parkland. And Emma talked about the fact that we needed to work together as a nation to ensure that this didn't happen again. Emma talked about the fact that although they appreciated the prayers and the heartfelt messages, that what they needed more than that was for every school district across the nation to act, to make things happen, to put systems in place. And the only way we can do that, the only thing that we can do as a district to accomplish that goal, is take care of what we can take care of, and that's our district, one campus at a time. So, thank you all very much for being here, and at this point, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
First, I'd like to recognize Conrado Alvarado Jr. He approached me and did give me a time limit, right? I'd like to say, first of all, my name is Pete Romero. I'm a former educator and former administrator here in McAllen ISD. And I guess I'm one of the very few administrators that still goes to schools to substitute, maybe about a day, a day and a half out of the week. So, I know more or less what's going on. First of all, I'd like to say, Dr. Gonzalez and your administration, and all the staff members, keep up the good work you're doing with this. It should be a model for other schools to implement. Also, I would like to add that the two words I didn't hear was gun control. The bottom line, in my opinion, if you have gun control, you can have all this in place, no problems. But as long as you have pawn shops, gun shops, that make high-powered rifles, like the AR-15, available for people, you're going to have violence in the schools. They're easily accessible. The young man who recently shot all the kids and the coaches in Florida had bought seven high-powered rifles. That's no excuse. Somebody dropped the ball. I myself feel that the President of the United States and Congress should enact laws so we can have gun control. And if you have gun control, we can still have Amendment Two by people having handguns and a pistol and a shotgun. What is there to defend ourselves from? Now, I'd just like to point out, and in 1918, in a very small town of Fort Venier, Mexico, I mean, Fort Venier, United States, I hate to say this, but Texas Rangers went over and unarmed the people. Three days later, it was a premeditated, and they murdered the kids. Now, Amendment Two was written for an issue to defend ourselves, but we could still defend ourselves with a shotgun and a pistol. We don't need high-powered rifles. And some, I know some people will say, well, to defend ourselves, defend ourselves from what? We have the police, we have the militia, and the guns were made for the militia. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your comment. I do want to recognize our Vice President, Larry Esparsa, sir. Thank you for being here. Round of applause for Mr. Esparsa. Thank you, Mr. Romero. Question, yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Carla de la Fuente Garza. I have students at the middle school and high school levels. I noticed that you mentioned that there are security lobbies in all our elementary schools. Do you have any plans on installing security lobbies in the middle schools or the high schools?
Yes, ma'am. Right now, we're currently working on a facilities master plan, a facilities education master plan, and part of those plans are aimed at safety, so that's something that we are considering for the future, because we want our schools to be as safe as possible, and we know that those lobbies create that boundary. So, that is something that we're having discussions about. Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your question.
Hi, I'm Emilio Batran, and I go to Nicky Row High School. And I had a question and a bit of a concern. I see that you guys have all these things in order for us to be safe, but my concern is, we don't practice any of them at our schools. We haven't had a lockdown drill in probably a year or so at Nicky Row, and a lot of, well, from my personal view, a lot of students don't really feel safe coming to school, because we don't really practice any of these drills, and we don't feel like they're really implemented as well as you're saying that they are. And coming from Nicky Row, I could tell you, there's a lot of places in the school that I would consider blind sides. Like, a lot of classrooms, the way that the doors are positioned, you can see the entire room just from the door, and you can easily get, if you were a school shooter, could easily shoot the entire classroom, and it's really concerning to me, and I just wanted to tell you.
Well, first, thank you very much for your feedback. Let's give Mr. Batran a round of applause. And one thing I will say, that the standard is that we practice monthly, so that's something that we will definitely address. I know that the expectation is that we practice, and we'll put that in place. Yes. Any other questions?
Hi, thank you. Richard Sanchez, my daughter goes to Ben Mylum Elementary. And thank you for doing this, and thank you all very much, the Board and Superintendent, for taking this seriously. So, my concern is that, at the elementary school level, I don't see a lot of security or any type of officers, or any kind of patrol that would deter somebody from coming in. I walk my daughter to school every morning, and there are holes, there are leaks, and I wonder if there's anything being considered that could involve some of us? Maybe a neighborhood patrol type of concept, but for schools? Something that would bring force multipliers, bring, and it didn't even have to be, you know, parents, it could be lesser-paid security guards, because I know budget's always an issue. So, can you bring more personnel to the schools? I know at the high schools, there's more.
Yes, sir.
But at the elementary schools, there's just a lack of personnel. And I always think about Sandy Hook, so it's not out of the realm of reality that something awful could happen at an elementary school. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you for your point. We hadn't considered that, but that's something that we'll definitely look at, as far as getting kind of safety patrol-type, neighborhood watch-type situations going. That's a great point. This side of the room, and then we'll come back? Yes?
Hi, Triana Rodriguez.
Hi, Triana Rodriguez, I am also an educator, I have two little ones, one attends Fossum Middle School, my other son attends second grade at Garza. I wanted to start off by just applauding McAllen ISD, first of all, for doing this, for getting parents together and also for those text messages and emails that we received last week. I know that they helped set me at ease when all that was going on. I absolutely love these, did you call them safety lobbies? Is that what you called them?
Yes.
I think that is just the best implementation of security that could have been put into our schools. And I know that some parent asked about the middle schools, I know that at Fossum, they do have a safety lobby in place.
Of our seven middle schools, Fossum is the only one.
Yeah, and I think it's genius to, to have that, that is what I wanted to bring up, that sometimes I think common sense is something that we don't think of right away and that security lobby to me seems like it would be common, common sense from the very beginning and so I do applaud the district for putting that in whenever they did it, however, it gets done as long as it gets done. Going just to my comment about common sense and safety, locking the classroom doors, I know that that sounds like something that's very simple, but at where I work at, at my campus, where we actually had a situation with a loaded gun being brought to our campus, I can tell you from experience that slamming that door shut and bringing in as many students as possible out of that hallway in record time was crucial to the success of, of that lockdown, having absolutely no incident at our school.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for all you do as an educator, appreciate you. Another one, yes, ma'am?
Hi, thank you very much for the presentation, I feel much better knowing that all of these measures are in place. I have two questions, well, one is a question and one is a comment. My kids happen to go to schools that have larger populations, Mylum and Morris, and so when you all make allocations for counselors to identify kids in need, or you make allocations for officers that are patrolling, do you all take into account ratios? Because at Morris, there's one police officer, but then there's some middle schools that have 600 kids as opposed to 1,000 and they also have one police officer. So do you all take student population into account when you're making assignments for counselors and police officers?
Yes, for counselors and not for officers at this point, but that's something that we can definitely look at.
I mean, because, you know, they're bigger campuses, there's a lot more children, so I, I think it makes sense to look at population.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other thing is that my, I asked my son, who's at Morris, I asked him, have you all done any kind of training if there's an active shooter in your campus? And he said, no. And, and then I talked to Mr. McClinney and he said, yes, absolutely, we do all kinds of lockdown drills. But he's a smart kid and he really didn't make the association between an active shooter and, and what to do in that specific situation. And I hate to take away their innocence, but I also don't want them to be naive. And I think that when you all do training, you should specify to the kids, in this situation, here's what you do, so that they make the associations, because he really, it never crossed his mind that that was what he was supposed to do in an active shooter situation.
Right, yes, yes, ma'am. And I, and I do want to thank Gina Millen, Karam Millen, she's part of the McAllen Education Foundation also, so thank you for being here, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And along, along that line, one of the things that we did learn from, from the, the high school in Parkland, what, what we did learn from, from that situation is they, they call the active shooter a code red, right? So maybe something that we need to do, chief, is, is look at color coding it, so lockdown code red would mean we're in lockdown, but the code red is that there's an active shooter. So that's something that, that we could definitely look at to, to create that environment where, where we know, because we do practice lockdowns, but you're, you're right, we, we need to be more specific on, on that, so that, that's an excellent point. Yes, sir.
Hi, doctor, my name is Riggo Dines, I have three, actually, one graduate and three kids currently in the system, in the district. And I have two-part questions, there'll be a test afterwards, so.
Yes, sir.
There's been a lot of discussion, I'm, I'm a little bit reluctant to bring this up because I certainly don't want to enter into a, a larger debate that our nation's having, but there have been some discussions that one of the ways to resolve this is to have actually more guns at school, whether that's in the terms of more police officers that are armed, or armed teachers, or volunteers, or what have, what have you. The, the question is, is that true, is that a, an alternative, or is that an option that the school's actually looking at for the future? And if so, how would it be implemented? Would it be implemented through police officers, certified trained police officers, or, or how?
At this point, to answer your question, we're not discussing anything further than more police officers on campus being armed would be the only way to put more weapons in, in our building, we haven't had discussions beyond that. I know that there are two districts in the state of Texas that have teachers that are armed, but there are more rural areas that, that are utilizing that, but that's not something that we've discussed, but we have discussed bringing in more police officers.
But there is a specific state law, I think, that allows you to do that in terms of teachers, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Ivan, I have two kids in elementary and middle school. And my concern is that I've seen the officers in middle school and, and I feel the same need that the officers should be armed. You know, elementary has no presence, I, I, I go a lot, I, I honestly haven't seen police presence. And to me, I feel safer having an armed officer at the entrance when the children are, are, are getting to school. You know, I, I feel that if a child had an intent of doing anything, seeing the officer, he would change his mind, you know, and I feel safer having an officer armed in my, my kids' campus.
You're referring to the elementary?
Or, and middle school.
Okay, at the middle school, we do have armed police officers.
Okay.
Yes, sir. At the elementary schools, we don't have somebody assigned, all of our peace officers, we don't have any security guards, so.
Yeah, because I, I seen at the Crockett Building where there's a lot of officers, but not at my kids', you see, but not at my kids' school.
Right, that, that's the main building, that's where the, like, their center is, but, but we do it, all the high schools, we have four police officers, at every middle school, we have one and they are armed. But, but I see your point, even at the elementary schools, it, it would be, it would be important to see that. One of the things chief and I were talking about was building kiosks for our officers to be more visible at the, at the middle schools and the high schools where they're there permanently, so that's something that we did talk about, so at the point of entry, you would see a police presence. We still have the obstacle of not having officers at the elementary and that's something that is in discussion, yes.
Hello, good evening, my name's Javier Chamberlain, my daughter Maya is a senior at Mackay. Great school, excellent teachers and administration there. I have a question. Recently, there was a threat made at Mackay, they found out who the gentleman was. I understand that they released the gentleman back to the school and there were several threats made, that this gentleman made through, through social media, et cetera, wanting to, to, you know, hurt kids and so forth. But I guess my question is, is what is the process for allowing, you know, these type of kids or, or boys or whatever, making threats and then allowing them back in the school?
One of the things, first, we do have a very good system for catching social media posts, we have systems within our technology department that can catch keywords, we also have our police department looking for keywords and threats, we also have a very active community on social media that gives us the information, but once we get to that point, then there's two avenues that happen, one is the police investigation and one is the administrative investigation. On the police investigation side, the police are following the Texas Penal Code and we don't really get in that lane, that's up to the police department, we can't hinder with a police investigation, so we don't really go there, but what we are doing with our police department is we're working at being more aggressive now with regard to terroristic threats or, or wanting to harm somebody. So that's the message to the community right now is to talk to your students, to talk to your children and let them know that any threats on social media could potentially get them in some very, very serious legal trouble, because a lot of times, these kids don't really realize that this is a felony charge in what you're doing. So as far as the police side, that, that's something that occurs and, and it doesn't happen, I mean, there's, there's systems that have to happen before you charge a kid and before they, they get their consequence. On the administrative side, there's a lot of different variables, it may be a kid that's, that's covered under special education or Section 504, so that requires meetings, they call them, I'm not going to get into the technical aspects of it, but we have to determine whether their disability was linked to their actions and so there's armed meetings and, and meetings with parents. So some of that, in some cases, when they're covered under special education or 504, requires a couple of days before a consequence is put in place. But what we've learned over the last couple of days with incidents that have occurred is that we're going to be much more aggressive on the legal side and much more aggressive on the administrative side when it comes to kids making posts with regard to wanting to hurt somebody.
Excuse me, what's the reaction time for this, doctor?
The reaction, it depends, I mean, I, I can't, I can't give you.
It's safe to say that whatever threat the gentleman was referring to, that I think as all of us as parents, in the recent days, we've, we've come across it.
Yes.
And, and I think it's kind of, and I don't want to sound technistically, but I think it's a little bit, and to the very least, concerning, if, if my kid is saying, yeah, he, he, he's in the, he's in the lunchroom, he's asking for lunch from people, and he says this is what his life is like at home, and, and he'll show up and he'll be bruised up sometimes, and we're wondering, what is the reaction time for these processes that we have in place to catch something that can be very, very drastic?
Everything is a case by case, but in every one, we're trying to move as fast as, as we possibly can, so it would be impossible for me to give you.
That's why I love my district, because you're doing the best you can.
We are doing the best that we can, the very, very best that we can, I mean, we're putting our heart and soul into it, all, all of this here is, is what we do, but, but there, there, it's difficult situations, there's a lot of moving parts, but I guess the message to everybody in the room is that all the staff members in McAllen ISD, we're working hard to address those things and many times, we can't move as fast as we can, but I'll tell you one thing, whenever we, we don't, we always go back and say, how could we have moved faster on this one? So we're, we're, we're trying our best, but we're gonna get better. No, that's okay, you didn't even need a mic, you're loud, loud enough. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a compliment, by the way. Yes, yes, if, I mean, if you don't need a mic, yes, 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 ma'am.
Good evening, my name's Mr. Romero, I'm the librarian at Cathy Middle School. So I do commend everybody for the proactive measures we've taken, but another measure, perhaps, and maybe just a recommendation, have you reached out to any government agencies that do have great training for active shooter to make sure that our police department has the up-to-date training so that we are, if, if God willing, that it doesn't happen, and God forbid, but if it does happen, that our officers are well-trained because we need to give them the tools that they need to be successful and to protect our staff and students. And with that being said, another thing is that we have great technology and we have wonderful students in our district, perhaps making a video where the students show the children what is expected of them with each of these emergency management drills, so they know, they have a visual representation of what's expected of them.
I love that idea, that's something that we can definitely do and, and yes, our, yeah, round of applause. Our, our police officers are highly trained, our police officers are certified peace officers, they, they do know how to respond to active shooters, they do, they do train, their, their technique is aligned with city technique and federal technique, so we're, we're on that. But yes, I love the idea of the videos and that's something that we'll definitely look at executing.
Congratulations, Dr. Gonzalez, for having all these systems to protect our children.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I want to mention, somebody mentioned about gun control, well, gun control is the job of the legislators. If we want to change gun control, we have to vote for a legislator that will help us and do that. So our job as adults, we have to go out and vote if we want better gun control, that's how you change the laws that we have against gun control. That's what I want to say, thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Carmen Donahue, I have a son who graduated from IB program, he's at Baylor and I have a son at Morris Middle School. I have a, I was one of the parents that when we got the alert last week, I went to the school to check my child out. I spoke to the principal and the officer, they're very, very kind. What we need is something, not just a foyer, that is an unsecure school, that you walk right in to unlocked doors, the, you can walk straight down the hallway to the library, to the classrooms without the receptionists even seeing you. And they are aware of that, they are like, we're doing the best we can, they are, you guys are doing a great job, I love the schools. But maybe common sense, lock the front doors, put a buzzer system in, and a camera, that is very, very simple, that's not a lot of money, we can get it at Best Buy, but instead of waiting, you know, okay, we're gonna get to this in three years or two years, that's something we can do, and if it's a PTO thing, I think every parent in this room would be willing to, and I know that that's not just Morris, it's, you know, I know Fossum is secure, but we need to have something and maybe just locking the front doors so that someone can't just walk in and look, have a backpack like a student, like the gentleman that did this horrible thing last week. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, that, that's an excellent idea and that, that's one of the ideas that would take teamwork and an understanding from a parent's standpoint, that when you would go there, that you would have to wait. Along that same vein, and in thinking about that as you were making that comment, another thing that we would need help with is especially at the secondary schools, we have many parents that on a daily basis bring their children lunch during the lunch periods and that creates a lot of movement. At the high schools, we have situations where our students are walking out to the, to the cars and, and getting the lunch and then, and then coming back in, and we're trying to, to be understanding on that, but we're at a point in the game right now where, where we're gonna need to stop that and where if a parent's gonna deliver lunch to their child, that they're gonna have to go to that locked door and go in and sign in and provide that lunch, but that's where I need you all's help because then there's gonna be a little bit of pushback. So it's, it's, it's things like that where we're saying, yes, we can, we can lock the door, but then there's also areas where we're gonna need your help too, so that, that's something that, that I would ask as we move forward. We haven't implemented that, by the way, not yet, but that's something that we talked about today. I'm sorry, where are we at? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Alejandro Arias and I have a son in, in Fossum and a daughter in Perez. And actually, my son just got a, a death threat just Friday and the teachers acted pretty quick, was satisfied with that and the policeman there was, was really quick and, and made, made sure that my son was safe and, and the other, his classmate was safe as well. But I was wondering that most of the kids that I see in, you know, my, my son's school, most of them carry phones. And even at elementary, a lot of them carry phones, you know, so, so if they have smartphones, are there, is there something that you maybe would look into to try to use that, like an alarm for everybody? Because most of the kids, if they get a, a message from, from somebody, even from school, they will know right away and they could actually probably report if they see anything really quick and just make it, you know, faster.
That, that's an excellent point, we are looking for a, a solution to that. At this point, we hadn't thought about getting student numbers to do the alert, which is a great idea, but one of the things that I will ask all the parents in the room is that if your dad is not up to, up to date, your phone number is not up to date, your address, your email's not up to date on Skyward, that you do that, because we do have a school messenger system that sends out information, but if it doesn't have the right number, then it doesn't get to you, so that's on the parent's side, but the point on students, that's something that we can, that we can definitely look at, thank you for that, yes?
We've got three right here that we promised and so this one came.
Can I? Oh, okay, all right, okay, well, I'll, I'll say something. Thank you very much for having this discussion. My name is Lilaan Hu, I'm the mother of a student at Memorial High School and what was said there about Mackay, my daughter had told me she saw the person, I don't know how she knew, that made the threat, and there he was at lunch, so she was concerned about that. I just want to make that point. I want to ask a question and make a comment. The question is, we come from San Antonio and everybody at our schools knew if there was an emergency situation, the parents would go to a neighboring school so as to not block, you know, if there were emergency services, there was an elementary and a high school next door to each other, if anybody heard anything on the news or got an alert to go to this other high school, is there some kind of system like that? Because I've not heard of it.
We have systems where in the event that we need to evacuate, let's say, for example, we need to evacuate Perez Elementary, they would go to Morris or Morris would go to Perez, but a lot of our other schools are, are spread apart where it would take transportation to make that happen. We don't have a system that, that says before you get there, go here, but that's something that we can think about. We have a system where if you're there and something happens, this is where we're gonna take you, but I think that that's an excellent point.
So somewhere for the parents to go?
Absolutely.
And be updated and not be in the way of the emergency.
So I know you're on your way to school, don't take them there, take them here and then you.
No, 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 if there was an emergency.
Right, if there was an emergency, that's what I'm saying, in the event, we don't want you to take your kids to Mackay.
Like this lady went to the school, go somewhere. Like this lady went to the school, go somewhere else, okay?
Yes, that's something that we will look at, thank you very much for that.
So my comment is that-
Oh, this is filmed, okay, yes.
I'm involved with an organization called Moms Demand Sen-, Moms Demand Action, right? And, and as part of that program, there is a presentation called Be Smart, where it teaches parents to keep their guns safe. I would be willing to set up a presentation for the parents for that, because these children that have guns, where are they getting it from? Okay? So everybody has a responsibility, whether it's voting, keeping their guns safe, I agree with this gentleman over there, and everybody can do something. I have signup sheets and fact sheets about Moms Demand Action, the students that are marching to DC, and on the 24th, there's going to be a national thing, so if anybody's interested, come to me in the red shirt at the back of the room and give me your name, and we will try and organize something.
Thank you very much for your comment. We have about eight more minutes, we have about eight more minutes, let, let's jump over here and then we'll jump back, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm going to try to make some sense on what I'm going to say, because I have so many ideas. First of all, thank you to all the parents, I have a child in Mylam, one in Morris, one in potentially Mackay or Lamar.
Okay.
Besides Mylam, I can walk into any of the other three schools with no problem, just like that. And that's a concern, like the lady said, I think especially in Morris, given that the kids are very immature yet, and they don't know what they're doing, and social media is affecting them big time, they don't know how to handle those things, I think those doors need to be locked. I am an educator myself, and we, as, unfortunately, something needs to happen for us to react, so we started locking our doors, which is uncomfortable for teachers, but we need to do it in case of something. So I think that for Morris would help a lot, given that it's a very big and unsecure campus. The other thing with the guns, perhaps random backpack checks, which I don't think any parent would mind, at least I would never mind someone checking my kid's backpack, because you never know what they have in their backpacks, so maybe a random check, since I know metal detectors would be a chaos, because we have, we wear metal all the time.
Right, right.
So, those, those things, I think would be-
To the locking of the doors, I think that that's a system that we could strongly consider, so long as parents would be willing to do that. On the random searches, that's something I'd have to check on, on, with random searches and Fourth Amendment rights and things of that, I, I, I would love to do it, and it's something, I'll talk to legal counsel and, and, and get with my bosses and see if that's the will.
I think most of the parents were, also to the lunch, I think we can all make arrangements to send our gift with lunch, and McAllen provides lunch, because that is a big, big interference. And I can see parents-
I agree to that one.
And I am one of those, you don't know if I'm a crazy person, and I can walk in and have lunch with my child, but I don't know that, that, the person next to that. So I think that's a children's environment, and we have no business there, unless it's a performance or something else.
And that, that is, is an excellent point, and that is an example of us having to come together as a community to agree on that, to compromise, to be okay with that. I agree 100% too, but it would take, that's kind of a big team decision, then, and we can make that happen, that's something we can definitely consider, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to compliment first the superintendent, Dr. Gonzalez, and the principal, Cindy Peña, for organizing this event, this town hall meeting. My name is Ruben Ninojos, and I served at the local school board, like many of my friends here. I served on the Texas State Board of Education another 10 years, and I served 20 years in the US Congress, in the Education Committee, as well as the Banking Committee. And I want to share with you just a few moments, because I don't want to keep you longer than you had planned. I'm proud to say that I was born and raised here, the son of Mexican immigrant parents who came in 1910. They met when they were adults and had 11 children. And I'm pleased to say that I am one of those 11, the eighth of that group, and I'm so proud that our parents believed in what education would do to improve the quality of life for all of us. So today, I not only thank the two people I thanked in my beginning comments, but I want to thank the board members who are here, the elected officials. And I want to talk about some additional information that you must record in your mind, in addition to all the wonderful recommendations that have been given by the speakers. But I want to say that nothing shook me up more. In my first term, I hadn't finished my second year of being in Congress, when we were given the, the notice as congressman of the attack in Columbine High School, where 38 children were killed. I was in the Education Committee that, that moment that we got that urgent message. And there have been hundreds and thousands of students and persons working at those schools that have been killed. If I've learned anything from this, would be that we have been told by the consultants, if you see something, say something. And they're talking about if you see something that's wrong, if it looks or smells, or you think there is something wrong, it doesn't necessarily have to be children with disabilities or mental problems, or adults. Look at how 9/11 changed the security at our nation's Capitol, and the Texas Legislature in the Capitol in, in Austin, Texas. I remember sitting in the kitchen, writing a speech that I was going to deliver on the House floor one morning, when I saw the TV set and saw an airplane hit one of the Twin Towers in New York, and I thought that was an accident. But soon after that, a second airplane hit another one of the Twin Towers, and I said to myself, we are at war. My wife ran to the school. We have five children. The two youngest ones were very, very young when this happened. Katie must have been at kindergarten, and Katn must have been at pre-kindergarten, but my wife rushed over there, but so did hundreds and hundreds of mothers and, and fathers rushing to get their children. Next, there was a, a plane that hit the Pentagon, and we could see this black smoke from my house. You talk about emergencies at a national level. For our parents who have lost their children, when they were told that a gunman got into our schools and did the killings that they did, in so many cases, in so many states, in so many different cities, you can understand the importance of this town hall meeting. You need to know that all these recommendations are wonderful, but you made a very, this gentleman here in the second row, made a very strong request, and that was that we get out and vote for people who will indeed have the training, the education, and the courage to stand up to the lobbyists, the strongest being the NRA. Listen to the children from Florida who spoke here these last few days, and how they say, ask each one of the congressmen or each one of the elected officials, how much money they take from the lobbyists. Did you know that the amount of money in Washington DC that is utilized by the lobbyists exceeds $1 trillion in a cycle of two years? One of the girls who spoke, young, a young woman with a Spanish name, said, I know how much the president, and he was talking to President Trump, I know how much you took in this year of your election, you took $30 million, and that's why you haven't mentioned gun control and gun control laws that will change the situation that we have. It takes 218 votes in the House of Representatives to be able to pass legislation, be it a bill or an amendment to maybe an existing bill. I voted immediately after that first time of, in the attack in Colorado, so that we could stop the gun shows on the weekends and not have any requirements like is required Monday through Friday if you go to the Sears or the, any one of the stores that sell guns. Background check, there is no background check on the weekends, and there are tens of thousands of weapons and bullets and weaponry sold. We voted, and I got on the floor and I spoke with lots of determination, and we could not get the 218 votes in the House, and we couldn't get the 60 votes that was required in the Senate. I was put on the blacklist by the NRA, and I kept voting in favor of all of these gun changes and gun controls and all of this, year after year, for 20 years I did this. And I can see why some of my friends who stayed in Washington are going through their, you know, the frustration that they're going through right now. But look at what these young people, 14, 15, 16, 17-year-olds that survived in Florida, and how they have put together a plan for March the 24th to have 100,000 or more people in Washington DC. And we saw students in Austin and in many of the capitals, this last few 48 hours, gathering and trying to make a change. I applaud them. I have five children, four girls and one boy, and I'm proud of all of them. I have six grandchildren, and I'm proud of them too. But ladies and gentlemen, it's more than the wonderful plan that has been laid out and very necessary, but parents, and this parental involvement that I see here today, makes my heart swell with pride on the importance of parental involvement. I'm very proud of you. We've seen the Rio Grande Valley in a transformation that I had never seen in my life. And so, let's stand up and fight, let's, let's force the president to stop protecting Russia and protecting those that have hurt us so badly, and that he should stop complaining and belittling the FBI and all these federal agencies that have found the, the, the proof of what has happened here in our country. I could speak for an hour.
Thank you very much, Congressman, we appreciate you. Thank you so very much.
My name is Vincent Housley, I'm a Texas peace officer, I've been in law enforcement for 14 years at the school district, local and state level, and I'll turn down the politics a hair. I want to let you guys know that with all the experience I have in law enforcement, I have zero hesitation sending my three kids to their schools, okay? Sending my wife to teach at the school, zero hesitation at all. I have one question, and maybe the, the chief will know, at the middle schools and high schools where we do have officers on campus, what's the average response time to, you know, if there's a fight called out at one end of the school, what's the average response time?
It just depends on whether they're, whether they're busy or not, it's relatively quick.
They're, they're, they're already there, it just depends on what part of the building they're in. I know that we get good response with the staff as well, so, I mean, everybody's bought into it, everybody takes ownership, and it's just a matter of, you know, doing the right thing.
I, I can say, I, I was at the, I've been with the district for 20 years, and 13 of those years are at the campus level, working with police officers at the secondary level, so top-notch individuals, sometimes it's seconds, I mean, it's very, very rarely more than, than a minute, I mean, they're, they're quick, so-
Yeah, I, I agree, and my, my question, the reason I ask that is, most of the major shootings generally is two to three minutes, is the shooting time, I'm, I'm loud, I can be loud in there.
It's generally about two to three minutes, and I think it would be good if we could, and it's really difficult, I used to work in a school, I know it's difficult to track response times, because a lot of times it's over the school walkie-talkie, you're not going through dispatch and things like that, but getting that number, maybe, you know, doing a study on it and figuring out what, what that number is, so that we can get it into that window of two to three minutes, so that we can, our law enforcement can be effective if something happens.
Yes, sir, thank you very much for your comment, appreciate you.
Yes, sir. I'm Dr. Reyes, I'm a surgeon here in McAllen, been, doing trauma for many years, and one of the things that we want to implement here is what is called Stop the Bleed. Stop the Bleed was designed by the American College of Surgeons and the Hartford Commission after Sandy Hook Elementary, and we've been trying to learn a lot of things. One of the things, so you understand how important this is, when Columbine happened, the response was five minutes. Policemen were there in five minutes. Unfortunately, they were not able to go in for one hour. So the purpose of all this is to train the educators to help people in these concerns. There's two things that we have also learned, one is, it's always about a bullet, but they always bring explosives. So between gunshot wounds and, and concussion wounds, we have to be sure that our educators, our teachers, why? Because who is the first one in the shootings? Policemen and teachers. And sometimes they're inside the class with people. If they're inside the class, they cannot go out and they have an injured student there. There's what we call the golden hour. We have to try to help the person so it doesn't bleed out. Seems to be very simple, but it's not. And in order to know how to put a tourniquet, in order how to place trauma gauze, and how to stop the bleed, there's some knowledge that has to happen. We're trying to implement this, we hope to partner with, with you.
Absolutely.
This is no selling anything, and as of last year, I was the, the only instructor of Stop the Bleed here in the valley. I'm going to train more people in our trauma level in, in UHS, but I am available for any school, any school can reach me, and I will go and give them a 30-minute talk about how to help people when they have a gunshot injury, how to put a tourniquet, how to stop it, in order to help them to get the appropriate ambulance for people here to help them.
Yes, sir, doctor, we'll take you up on that, thank you.
I'll give my information, and I am available anytime to go to any school.
Thank you very much, doctor, appreciate you, thank you. I'm sorry, yes?
We take turns, I'll come to you.
Over here, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's okay, my name is Gloria Nohosa, my daughter goes to Memorial High School, she just texted me, she wanted me to be here, she knows about what happened on Thursday with that person that did the threat message, she wants to know, she wants to let everybody know that they're not safe, they don't feel safe anymore. She has nightmares at 4:00 in the morning. I, I have neighbors that go through the same thing, I just want to make sure that when I drop off my child, she's safe. And I'm shaking because I'm upset that she feels, that she's afraid to go to school. She's only 15, we have to do something. And I'm sorry, I'm shaking, but I'm just-
No, that's okay. That's absolutely fine.
She wants everybody to know in here that they're afraid.
Yes, ma'am. And we don't want them to be afraid, and we're going to put systems in place. We have systems in place, but we definitely need to work with the system.
And she also wants to know, why wasn't that child placed in 24-hour hold at a behavior center?
I can't get into those details, because it's.
What about the police officers who are here? They can't say anything about that either?
No, ma'am, but we, no, we can't make reference to that particular.
So what is the action if it happens again? Are you guys going to release the child back if he does it again?
Everything's on a case-by-case. We're going to do everything we can within the law and within the Student Code of Conduct to address the matter.
And parents, always tell your kids you love them, no matter what, where you guys going, if you're in a rush, make sure you tell them you love them.
Just, thank you, ma'am. Yes.
Hi, I'm a grandma, and Mr. Inojosa mentioned that if you see something, say something.
Yes.
So it was, somebody did call the FBI and said something twice to the incident Friday. Somebody had called the FBI twice, and they dropped the ball. And also, he had mental problems. So, you know, you have to take that into consideration. And also, if the coach had been armed, he would have solved the problem right there, you know, the incident.
You're talking about the Florida case.
Yes, the Florida case.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Frank Garza, I have two kids at Garza, which is staffed by a great group of educators. And this is more on the facilities end, because on the facilities, I know every school's different. I have more experience with Garza, because this is my third, second and third kid there. But if we can look at each campus, I'm sure you all will, but in some campuses like Garza, you can literally drive a car into the playground from the backside of a lark park and come around through the field. So that's one of the things that we've addressed in the past, you know, just with parents and talking. So, but every school, I understand, is different. So just with that, laid that out there. The second one is, is the district looking, maybe they do it already, I don't know, but maybe to have a risk assessment for each campus, and maybe for the district as a whole, where it comes together. For instance, I know that we have overpopulated campuses. I believe the lady here mentioned 900, a couple of the elementary schools. And I know for a fact, there's other campuses that may have 300 or 400. Obviously, rezoning is, I'm not going to get into that. But I think that those things are very important. I know that some schools have portable buildings. I mean, in the business that I'm in, I know that, you know, talking hard targets, soft targets, that's something I think that needs to be brought up. And for you, the decision-makers, to decide, we need to move forward, and we need to, as a group, as a team. Yes, sir. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much. We are short on time. Remember, if you don't get, we don't get to your question, you can always email your question to town.hall@mccallensisd.net, but I will take one more.
I'm the last one, all right. My name is Jerry Peña. I work for the McAllen Fire Department. I'm a public servant here in the city of McAllen. And, thank you. One of the things I want to say, Mr. Congressman, also, during 9/11, I was an active-duty Marine also, and we responded to that call out there to protect our nation. Now, I'm one of many veterans here locally that I can also respond to this call, that are very willing to augment police or, and/or help teachers in protecting themselves as well as the students. If something that can be brought up to the educators, that's something we can also do and provide a service for. Our children are a priority. I have six of them myself. A lot of work, but nonetheless.
That's awesome.
Protection for them is key.
Yes, sir.
And they're our future, so we protect them as well as anybody else.
Thank you very much for your service, for your comment. We'll take you up on that. Thank you all very much. Please send the rest of your questions to townhall@mccallensisd.net. Thank you for taking time to be with us.